All votes are properly given. Said vote has been submitted to the Court of News in Star River on January 8th, 2014, as well as posted on the bulletin board in the City Court's office. I'm going to go role call. Councilwoman Tracy Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Vera Reeves?
Here.
Councilwoman Swartz? I'm going to go on that call. Councilwoman Gloria Teller?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Chairman Reed is absent on the roll call. The Council President Rivers absent at all calls. We have a form of receipt. Right now, I need the nominations.
I make a motion that Councilwoman Williams service person. Since she's sitting there.
Second. Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and allegiance to the republic which stands on a mission of our God, who is faithful, who is worthy, and just for all. Humbly, we ask God, the giver of peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the life of his spirit of all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion on the floor where the City Council will go into executive session to discuss personnel matters with administration. Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Opposed.
Even though we don't have four yeses?
Yes, Council President.
Alright, so we'll go into executive session. We'll be back. Any motion to go back into session? Some? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and any extension of motion carries. Being that we don't have Mr. Reed here, Councilwoman Reed here, can I have a motion to appoint someone as acting? I'm not going to chair. I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Vera Reeves to act as our president.
Chairman.
Chairman. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and any extension of motion carries. Madam President, are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes. From the mayor Adrian Matt, correspondent David Mainton, who got some questions addressed to members of the government body, requesting advice and consent of the appointments of the following nominees to serve as members of the Public Culture and Heritage Commission: Mary Bell, Nancy P. Wall, Victoria Griswold, Albert E. Pittis, John Brinkley, Jennifer Toxson, David Rutherford, Louis Caladone, William Howard Terry.
Thank you. Are there any other communications or positions?
None submitted.
Any reports to special committees?
Yes. Court's office received a public state briefing report from Councilwoman Tracy Brown.
Thank you. Okay, so it goes to the chair. The chairwoman.
Consideration? Consideration of public hearing on second reading and final passage? Consideration of ordinance for adoption on second reading. Agenda item? No, there is none at this time for second reading.
Thank you. Public comments are limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinance to be introduced on first reading. The floor is now open for public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinance to be introduced on first reading. Go ahead.
Johnny Pritchard, Senator, here on the Capitol. On the federal gear for the fire department, the firefighters need it and they need them badly because they're on the front lines protecting us day and night. Let's not forget that 343 New York City firefighters were killed in line of duty and action on September 11th, 2001. Firefighting is a dangerous business, just even a little bit more dangerous than police work. Our firefighters are out there day and night. When they get along, they go period. No ifs, ands, or buts, they go because lives are on the line, properties at stake. They want to go over to save a life, maybe perhaps save a home too. They're out there day and night. We must back them up in every way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lamar Maxson, 1040 Hillside Avenue, 25.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a comment about 243-14. We have a, well, we had a media person and now we're going to spend money to hire somebody to take our deeds. That doesn't make too much sense to me. We fired the person that we had. More, you know, completely revamped the whole media department, you know, and it's really a shame. We have some interns in there now that are, I guess they continue to do the work under the guidance of someone. You know, it pains me to know that he was working as a, I guess it was an audiovisual tech and then he was applying for the civil service certification. And when this process of turning, hiring, PIO, what happened was they changed the title. You know, I thought that was a pretty slick, cute move. You know, it's a political thing. That's the way they do it in politics. I understand. But what happened was, I understand that ATR was well aware of his application to Trenton and it continued on and on and on and on and on and he never got certified and never was made aware that his title had changed. So I don't know if the council was aware that that's what did happen. I'd like to talk a little bit about that transition report, which also takes into consideration of that media department talking about us making these, paying for this taping of these meetings. You know, the meat transition report never mentioned any good work that the media department or the Franko Cable TV had done. You know, it was very biased and slant. You know, Martin worked pretty hard in revamping that whole department. You know, the person who was tabbed for the PIO position worked on the transition report. I thought that was a very cute move also. For lack of a better term, I like that term.
Share it up.
She worked, well, this person worked, the PIO who was chosen for the PIO who was tabbed for that position, worked on the transition report. You know, and it was completely negative. None of the positive things that had transpired during the revamping of the media department was in that, in that transition report.
Council President.
Your motion to extend the time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and any extension of motion carries?
Thank you very much. And this person was also was going to be his boss. That was the way it was set up. You know, they, they both interviewed for the job. As I had said one time before, Lamar had extensive credentials. The person that we were going to hire, that we were going to hire, the administration was going to hire, her credentials was nowhere near what Lamar has. Yet, we got rid of him and we continue to say the money is not in the budget. The money is in the budget. We all know it. But he was fired under the pretense of something else. We don't know what happened. I'd like to know what happened. Somebody should tell me something. A lot of people here complained about us rebranding the city. I have a brochure here that was put together by Lamar. Everybody got it. It's all over the city, you know? We're talking about rebranding the city. We're talking about reaching out to hither and yon, trying to get people aware of what's going on here in the city and trying to make things happen here with our transibilities and things of that nature. A lot of people have said, "Well, I don't use Facebook. I don't use Twitter." Well, I don't know where you are. You better get with it because that's what's here. Instagram, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter. If you don't have a computer, you're in trouble. If you don't have a smartphone, you're in trouble. Lamar is well aware of all these things. This is what he was trained for. This is what he does. This is what he was good at and is good at. You made a mistake. I'd like somebody to fix it, one way or another. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more for the other floor? Say enough.
Yeah, let me, I thought he was going to get up. Rashid Adul-Hak, 1272 Park.
Good evening.
Hi. I share the same sentiments that Lamar Maxson Senior shares. I didn't know Lamar Maxson Junior that well. I knew him, but I used to always talk to him every time I saw him because I watch a lot of Comcast, a lot of our local stations, Just Cool and The Lady That Cooks, playing on Donald Jones. I literally knew Donald Jones. I just thought, it took a while, but it had come around very well. And I thought he was doing great and I would tell him that every time I saw him. So I just wanted to say that. There's one other thing. I want to make sure I'm bringing it up at the right time. It's about introduction of ordinances on first reading. Make a comment. This is MC 2014-12. And I'm, I'm asking the council to amend the article that prohibits indecent exposure and include the barring in that ordinance, amend it to include the barring of folks walking around with their pants below their butts. So, I mean, I'll keep bringing it up and any council person can amend that so that it's in there if they choose to.
Good evening.
I read a few regards to an article that I read on Mr. Rebecca Williams.
So you have to, are you speaking in reference to any of the ordinances?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Okay, you can come to the mic after you do on the regular portion of the public comments. Thank you. Any more for the other floor?
What do you think? Sharon Robinson, Queens, 216 Pemberton Avenue, Plainfield, Jersey. Good evening, everyone. And happy Father's Day to all of the gentlemen who have children or who have helped to raise some of those children. I'm standing to speak also about R243-14. And the reason being is because if you think about the council members, and some of you weren't here at the time, so I'd like to provide you with a little bit of information about it. I think I did once before. And that is when Mr. Matt was on the council, he spearheaded a situation that helped us to get rid of, unfortunately, Mr. Lawrence Rice, who was the media person a couple of years back. And Mr. Rice was very good at his job. He did everything for the city of Plainfield with regard to the media area. Adrian Matt felt that it would be a better scenario to outsource it and in doing so, it cost the city more money. Here we have an opportunity to maintain the services of a local gentleman who has quite a bit of experience. I had the opportunity last year to hire him, or at least a year or so ago, and that was at the suggestion of another person who had been doing a fine job with media, Mr. Payne. And so I think when we look at this kind of situation, I don't see, and I think that's what the community is upset about, we're wondering why was Mr. Maxson fired? Is it because he was asked to film that 17-minute video of Adrian Matt during business hours while Mr. Matt was sitting at the mayor's desk? And so because there was a lot of negative talk about that, that video, and I'm still waiting to see that uncut version. I think the whole city wants to see that. Is that why he lost his job because ultimately he did what was asked of him? So I think, you know, if there's a way, council members, please review this, please investigate. I know that your, your job is in reference to policy, things of that nature, and the administration is supposed to do day to day, but here's a clear-cut situation. If, if Mr. Maxson was fired because he is a, or was, an employee, an ad-will employee who could be fired at any given point, then there should be some explanation given as to why. Because I was here when you were going over your budget and it appeared that there was funds for him and everything was fine until that video was made. So, but you can't have it both ways. If we have the funding and it appears that we must have, the administration must be saying that we have the funding because if not, then we wouldn't have this document, this item on the agenda, this 243-14. I think Mr. Maxson did a yeoman's job in media and I'm asking if you all would please take a second look because it shouldn't be a situation in the city of Plainfield that people are just discarded for political reasons. It's unfair. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Tolliver. I live at 123 Sumner Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. And I'm here in support of Lamar Maxson. A few years ago, some of you was here, some of you was not. I got to put together a Welcome Home Veterans Hero Day. Mr. Maxson did a beautiful job and it didn't just stay in Plainfield, it went everywhere. This was, he was the only one, no one else but him, you know, on top of roofs and everything else. This was supposed to have been a major operation. It didn't happen, but he made it look like a major operation. Whistlehead, Fort Dix, Maguire Air Force Base, the flyover. This man did a beautiful, beautiful job. So I'm here in support of him also because I am a veteran and I've been visiting this council for over 20 years as a veteran, trying to get this council to see us as veterans, to give us a place. But Mr. Maxson gave us an opportunity, showed the, the National Guard in it. We are, well, we were very, very lucky to have someone this caliber and still learning and yet for some odd reason, as his father said, something happened. We had the money in the budget and all of a sudden, he's gone. Now, if someone, someone else is taking his place. Why, we don't know. Without his credentials, and he, his credentials were superb. And that's all I have to say because he was somebody that we had, could say, in this city, pride, that's what the city needs, is pride, and he was somebody we could look up to and say, that's pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more for the other floor? Say enough. Can I have a motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and any extension of motion carries? Administration, can you explain real quick, what is that? R242-14? We know, I just want to come up to. I mean, 243-14.
Yep. R243-14 is a resolution asking for authorization to go into contract with WBM Productions. And WBM Productions has been taping for the city for at least a year. You know, it's the individual to my left, who all of you have seen before. So she has been taping and what we wanted to do was legitimize the fact that we needed to bring her onboard with a contract as opposed to just asking her to come in whenever it was needed. So she's been doing lots of taping for the city for better than a year. At one point, she used to be an employee of the city and last year's budgets eliminated that position. But WBM Productions has been a key supplement to the city of Plainfield for various taping. So that's the reason for that. We wanted to legitimize the fact that we bring WBM Productions to help us with taping.
And how much is that done? How much is that done?
Not to exceed $17,499 over the course of the year.
Now, you're saying that she has been doing this all along? So how is she paid? I mean, you said this is, they've been doing this all along.
There should have been a resolution brought forward before from where I sit. So we're bringing a resolution forward for the fact that she's been taping. Should have been done.
And we've been paying her without a resolution, so you're saying?
Yes.
I could say this, I'm looking to all my public council, but the council and the administration are, we are still in discussion in reference to the future of the media department. And I just wanted to say that for the record. I mean, we're here. We hear what everyone is saying, so we are in discussion for the future. Thank you.
And I for one have a problem with this resolution because of the way this was done. It sounds okay to me that someone should be paid for their services, but I'm having a problem tonight into again of not following process, procedure, protocols with reference to, it looks very bad to the public and to me that we're going to get rid of someone in the department and then you're going to give us, tell us that we need to vote for a vendor for this amount of money, but we're still, it's just not proper. And I smell, I'm not going to say it, but I feel it. I don't like that way of doing business and given the, given what's going on with this and as we are trying to work with administration and we're investigating more than we probably would have had not this situation happened with Mr. Lamar, but I have a problem tonight. I'm not going to vote for this until we get someone to answer this. This is not right. I don't know, I want this young lady to get paid, but something's not right and I don't like doing business like this. I don't even like saying this in front of the public, but we should not, we should have gotten more information. This should have been explained better. This is not right, okay? So we've got to do some better.
Now, Mr. West, can you bring it down to her, please?
Resolutions are supposed to be introduced at the start of the year for those contracts that are going to continue and evolve over from year to year. There was a contract done in the past. One of the cleanup items was to generate a contract for WBM Productions. WBM Productions has been around. This is not new. The matters are not related. You know, many of you have seen her here taping. And so what we wanted to do was recognize the fact that WBM Productions is used by the city to do taping and therefore we wanted the authority from the council to enter into a contract.
So how was she getting paid? How was she getting paid? She's getting paid, see, I kind of know. She answered hourly. Was she getting paid hourly?
That's correct. In fact, the contract is, is based on the number of hours of work, up to and no more than $17,400.
Do we have other vendors that we use also with her 17.5 run out?
At this point, no. There are no other vendors assisting us with any taping. WBM Productions is the only one, you know, in media that does taping as an outside consultant.
So in that case, once her 17.5 run out, these individuals that's now sitting in the media department will come in and fill in?
They would have no choice but to do that.
So this contract is not approved tonight, the individuals that are now sitting in media will come and take the leads and all the outside events for the city.
Well, we would look to do that, but you should know that under 17.5, you know, administration also has the ability to enter into contracts. What we're trying to do is bring forward the fact that this is transparent. You know, it's not, there's nothing hidden, you know.
That's what I was trying to get at. As long as, if we pass this resolution tonight or not, you guys can make administrative decision to hire this person.
To engage WBM Productions, that's correct.
Excuse me. What's your working income? What's your working income, Jack?
Yes, she says she's done this.
Yes. Yes.
Can I just, you know, I.
I just want to say again that, you know, I'm, I'm still appalled and disgusted that one of the greatest assets of the city was fired in Lamar Maxson. But you stated, Mr. West, that this has nothing, that they're not related.
But then you just said that we're just working together.
They've worked together for a couple of years. She's been in media. She was here before I arrived, you know, doing taping. So that's when I said, yes, they've worked together. You know, there are a whole host of people who have done taping over the years and so yes, she's worked with them. She's still been. You know, otherwise we have to bring in people either on split shifts or overtime and right now there's one individual in the organization who also does taping. You know, so that person works during the day. You know, when you have events like this at night, we, you know, she's been used on many occasions, you know, to supplement the needs of the city. she's been used on many occasions, you know, to supplement the needs of the city.
Thank you.
I offer these resolutions listed on...
Uh, Council President, yes. All matters listed with an S are considered routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and decided separately of new business in its normal sequence later on, legitimate.
I offer those resolutions listed on the city's consent agenda, which are identified as R two one-two dash fourteen, R two thirteen dash fourteen, and R two fifteen dash fourteen, R two ten, two thirty-eight dash fourteen through two forty dash fourteen, and R two forty-eight dash fourteen, two forty-nine dash fourteen, and R two fifty-eight dash fourteen, and move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Mrs. Chair, Mrs. Chairman, will you please offer the remaining resolutions?
I hereby introduce resolution R two fourteen dash fourteen, authorizing an additional appropriation to government strategy group in the amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and move for adoption. Do I have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two sixteen dash fourteen, authorizing renewal of Club Cosmo trading as Club Cosmo, and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two seventeen dash fourteen, authorizing renewal of Mohawk Lodge Number three oh seven, Inc. I D, we are trading as, as Mohawk Lodge Number three oh seven.
Second.
And move for adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two eighteen dash fourteen, authorizing renewal of Douglas Hall Temple, trading as Stone Square Lodge, and move for adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two nineteen dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of the Pasta Shop, Inc., trading as Geovanas, and move for adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two twenty dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Trifecta Restaurant Holding LLC, trading as Ferran's nightclub, and move for adoption.
Which one, wait?
Two twenty dash fourteen.
Two twenty.
It's never been, never been... No, that's not what I have here.
Two twenty dash fourteen.
Trifecta, Trifecta. Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two twenty-one dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Ferran's nightclub, LLC, trading as Ferran's nightclub, and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
Two twenty-one.
Can I ask, okay, about this one? According to, and I appreciate that the police did, uh, did send us their reports. So for Ferron's, the, the report says there were a hundred and forty-eight incidents during the year, majority of which were non-criminal. Could we get an explanation of what that means? That, that was a comment on the number of these. What, what is it, what's an incident if it's not criminal?
Good evening. Captain Steven Salters from the Police Division. I'll explain the non-criminal just in relation to that, but I don't have to answer to the actual establishments. A non-criminal would be matters of disorderly person, anything that's not within the Part One crimes, you know, robbery, arson, burglary, and matters such as that, narcotics transactions. That would be the non-criminal matters. It's just mainly a disorderly person, or it could be a fight, could be a group just gathering in an area.
Okay, simple assault, disorderly conduct. So I assume this, that a lot of these probably related to drinking?
Uh, I couldn't answer directly. I, I haven't reviewed those matters. That was, that was done by, no, not controversy.
And when, for each one of those one hundred and forty-eight incidents, would the police call to the scene?
Yes.
So the police expanded significant, uh, resources responding to these calls? So in effect, they're using us as their, uh, security force at the taxpayers' expense for a hundred and forty-eight incidents during the year. And we're recommending them without any conditions. Why is that?
I wouldn't have the answer to that, that would be coming from...
I don't know, but you don't have to live in a city to be on the police force. But we pay taxes here. And I'm not, I don't, I don't want to address this here. I'm addressing this to the administration and to the police director. We pay taxes here, a hundred and forty-eight incidents is not a problem. Disorderly conduct, simple assault. And we're, and we're not imposing conditions or requiring them to hire off-duty police officers, so they would pay for this rather than the taxpayers?
If the list that you provided...
Yes.
We have the report. We don't have the, all of the detail, but we have the summary. Because I know, I did mapping for them to analyze things. And I know, I, I did a footage around it, five hundred, I think, five hundred square, five hundred feet radius. So I don't know what, a lot of times, they might have a list of offenses in that area of that establishment, but in reviewing them, find out that they don't apply to that establishment. They might be, uh, something that occurred nearby, had no relation to the ABC license.
I, I, I just can't accept that. I hope my colleagues will consider my suggestion to, to hold a hearing on this one?
Yes.
And, and consider whether we need to impose conditions? Where's Councilman Reed when you need him?
Good evening, Council President, there is a council. Carl Ryan, Director of... I, I agree with that. I have no problem with that, to be able to explain it a little bit more, to understand it. Absolutely no problem. In terms of incidents, it, it could be a host of various things. It could have been a fight, it could have been somebody stumbling there. It, it could be anything. It could be EMS calls, you know, various calls of non-criminal nature. It's not like the shootings, there's, there's drug-related activity or anything like that. I have no problem to investigate further.
But if we have a hearing, you could present all the facts? Because you have all the reports, you could...
Yes, I will have my person that's conducted investigation handle that with you guys, without a doubt, no problem.
Okay, so this, this, my comments are gonna come up numerous times tonight because there's, there's other, unless other people are gonna do it instead. But there's a number of these reports that are very troubling. We're recommending, some of them will recommend the conditions, but not all. This is one where we're not recommending conditions. That's my problem.
Okay.
I, I, what's the proper way to do this?
I just want to talk about some logistical difficulties in a situation like this. When you call for a hearing, it's an adversarial proceeding. In essence, now the, the council acts as the ABC Board. The administration, through its police department, will, in most cases, there'll be one seeking revocation of the license. And then there'll be counsel for the liquor license holder, who will say why revocation's inappropriate, or conditions are inappropriate, uh, and make the case for themselves. The problem with, take this one for instance, Ferron's, is that we have a police, the police department is telling us, we should renew the license. So in order to have an adversarial proceeding, you have to have two sides. Here we, here we don't have the police department recommending, uh, no renewal of the license. If the council wishes to see conditions on the license, you can do that without a hearing. You can do that based upon your review of the police reports. That's perfectly acceptable.
So we could do that, it's...
Yes, they could challenge those, yes, actually, they could challenge those conditions, in which case that would set forth a hearing. But you don't have to have a hearing in, in order to put those conditions upon the license or upon the renewal of that license.
So what would, where, where, and what would be the venue? What would be the venue for having that discussion with them to impose conditions without considering revocation of the license?
Now, at, right now.
Now?
Yes. If you wanted conditions upon the license, that is something that you could introduce now, prior to the vote.
Why didn't the administration, uh, agree to what was suggested by the police, which was that the license be renewed with stipulations to prevent further incidents, that they be required to have more security of their own?
It doesn't...
That's what, that's what it says here. So why, why didn't we put that in the ordinance?
I believe it isn't. I believe, yes. I believe that all the conditions that were recommended by the police department were based into...
It's not in the resolution, it's in the report, but it's not in the resolution.
Then, then it should be, then I would, I would, I would recommend to the council that they be the ones to add that condition upon the, upon the license.
So could we hear from the police, since this, this, it's in the police report, what are your specific recommendations for this establishment? Because I'm just gonna read the report signed by the police. It says, recommend the license be renewed with stipulations to prevent further incidents. More security slash police. Is that too general, or is that...
Yes.
So could we hear from the police, so we could settle this tonight? We've talked about this every year, but we rarely take action. This is our opportunity to take action.
Evening, Captain Salters, again from the Police Division. Uh, one of the things that has been done in the past is the ordering of extra officers, off-duty officers, to be hired for the establishment. So that could be probably one of the ones to increase security, and we'd have a presence on scene.
So we, but we need, we need, how specific do we have to be in that business? A, a number of shifts, or what, how does that work?
Absolutely, if you got a certain amount. I, I believe there already are certain, uh, security at the Ferron's nightclub. Uh, if you wanted to recommend additional security, uh, a number of hours, uncertain days, number of, of, of security individuals, you could do that. The amount and the time that they'll be there, that's something that the council could do.
Is the police prepared to recommend, make a recommendation on that tonight?
Uh, I would, I would say that's what we should do, is go back.
Yes, go back.
Come up with an individual plan for each of the establishments.
The council could table this and bring it back.
And I want to say to administration, if we've been given this, we asked for it last week, we got it this week, then if we read it, you should have read it, and I think that should have been in the resolution itself. It looks like you're going back and forth. Who knows what's going on here? Um, it should have been done. If you wrote it in and they read, but we read, why would, why, why wasn't this done before? And why does it have to wait till us to do it? When we, you already know, you're administration, you're working together. So why wasn't it put into the resolution? That's all I'm asking. It's okay, we'll fix it, but I'm asking a question. Okay, so this one's on the table. Is that motion prepared, motion carries?
I move to table this resolution.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
Two twenty-seven, dash fourteen. I hereby introduce resolution, authorizing the renewal of Adam Francisco, Leo, Latino Corp., and move for its adoption.
Uh, second, if this is another one of those, I'm trying to find the, the fore or something. Okay. I move for the, uh, taking this one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce as resolution R two twenty-three dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of TTT Enterprises, trading as vehicles, and move for its adoption.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two twenty-four dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Bad, Martin, Betty, trading Latino, trading as Latino Heat Sports Bar and Bar, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two twenty-five dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of George P. E. Sofia Mancia, trading as Latinos Corp., and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two twenty-six, authorizing the renewal of Your Bongo Inn, trading as The Bongo Inn, and move for its adoption.
I move to table this one.
Get a second on the table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two twenty-seven, authorizing the renewal of Brindel Enterprises, trading as South Avenue Liquors, and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two twenty-eight dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Willen, Inc., trading as Station Liquors, and move for its adoption.
Get a second?
Start to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce...
Council President. There's an error I have on two twenty-nine. This should be renewal of Jersey Liquors, trading as Jersey Liquors.
Okay.
Okay.
I hereby introduce resolution R two twenty-nine dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Jersey Liquors, trading as Jersey City.
Jersey Liquor.
As Jersey Liquors, and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two thirty dash fourteen, authorizing the new, the renewal of KVHP Corp., trading as Ritz Wine and Liquor, and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two thirty-one dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Josh P. O. B. Inc., trading as Ben Franklin's Liquors, and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two thirty-two dash fourteen, authorizing the renewal of Adriano Torres, Inc., trading as Sanomo Liquors, and move for its adoption.
I move to table two thirty-seven.
Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extension, motion carries. If we can go back, I'm sorry, with the Ben Franklin Liquors, which was the previous one, two thirty-one. They had eighty-four more incidents previous year. It's, yeah, uh, they had a hundred and nineteen incidents. Last year, two thousand twelve to two thirteen, they had thirty-five incidents. Two thirteen to now, they had a hundred and nineteen. Now, now, the, the, police made a note that none of these were considered serious, but I still, you know, I think that, given that location, I think that, I don't know what not serious means. Maybe just drunkenness, or urination, or whatever. But I think that that one should be tabled. I know we, you know, it was just voted on, but... Can we, can we just go back and reverse the...
Motion reconsidered.
Motion reconsidered, okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
So the motion, we are tabling two thirty-one dash fourteen?
Yes, yes. Motion to two...
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any extension, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution... I hereby introduce resolution R two thirty-three dash fourteen. Authorizing the renewal of Cherry. Uba. Inc., trading as Pickle Liquors Store and move for its adoption.
I move to table two thirty-three.
Two thirty-three, yes.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two thirty-four dash fourteen. Authorizing the non-renewal, the non-renewal of Naked Inc. Trading as Arlington Liquors. Quinton Debbie and Rosary and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
Council President, this will now set forth a hearing on this particular resolution. Because the police department has specifically asked the council not to renew this license. So we will have to have a hearing in a special meeting.
I hereby introduce resolution two thirty-five dash fourteen. Granting the advice and consent for nominees to serve as members of the Plainfield Culture and Heritage Commission. And move for its adoption.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two thirty-six dash fourteen. Authorizing Insurcal Insurance Services to issue payment in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two thirty-seven dash fourteen. Authorizing the approval for the acceptance of fiscal grant extension from January first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. In the amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I have a question though. Why is this, I mean, really so late until June twenty, until June thirtieth, June thirtieth? It's right around the corner, two thousand and fourteen. Why is this so late?
We actually put this on, this article on the agenda a couple times, we had some problems with the contract. Got sent back and forth to, to the county, we finally got it straightened out with me. Now we're through to council so that we can actually sign the contract.
I hereby introduce resolution two forty-one dash fourteen. Rapidifying the execution of an agreement between the city of Plainfield and the Plainfield Fire, Fireman Mutual Ban, 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 Elephant Association and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two forty-two. Dash fourteen. Authorizing the approval to execute an agreement with Language Line Interpreter Services. In an amount not to exceed one thousand seven hundred dollars and moves, move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two forty-three dash fourteen. Approving qualified vendor WBN Production Services LLC. To provide media production services and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two forty-four fourteen. Authorizing an application and an execution of a grant agreement with the, with the Union County Arts Program to the Senior Citizen Center for the period of January first, two thousand and fifteen, December third, first, two thousand and fifteen. For the initial amount of five thousand dollars and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two forty-five dash fourteen. Adopting a chapter one fifty-nine resolution requesting approval to amend twenty-fourteen municipal budget by inserting special items of revenue and appropriations and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
What are the, um, what are we inserting?
We're inserting four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in grants.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
No problem.
Thank you. Nothing wrong with that, sir. I hereby introduce resolution two forty-six dash fourteen. Authorizing the amendment of a capital equipment release agreement by and between the Union County Improvement Authority and the city of Plainfield and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two forty-seven dash fourteen. Authorizing approval to enter in, into an agreement with the state of New Jersey and county of Union for the use of statewide emergency communication system in an amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty dash fourteen. Authorizing the award of a bid contract to the, to Defender Emergency Productions to provide thermal imaging cameras in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-one dash fourteen. Authorizing the award of a bid contract to Emergency Defender Production to provide firefighter's equipment in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-two dash fourteen. Authorizing approval for the Fire Division to purchase a public address system and emergency dispatch notification in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. And move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-three dash fourteen. Authorizing the continuation of management services for the Brownfields Program in the amount not to exceed five thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution two fifty-four dash fourteen. Authorizing approval for a street opening on Roosevelt Avenue in accordance with the Plainfield Municipal Code and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-five dash fourteen. Authorizing approval to submit and accept a grant application with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the, for twenty-fourteen transportation alternative program and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I have just a follow-up question on this one. Last, at the last meeting, there was a, somebody spoke at the microphone on behalf of local businesses that were, that were issued citations for sidewalk repair. Did we ever resolve that with those, with those merchants or with that speaker?
I think Jackie had a conversation, I'm sorry, our engineering department had a conversation with him. I'm not sure if it's been resolved yet, but, um, I actually just got to call him myself, so.
Could you just give us an answer on that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
I hereby introduce resolution two fifty-six dash fourteen. Authorizing approval to submit and accept a grant application with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for twenty-fourteen safe route to school grant and move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-seven dash fourteen. The mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with the county, with the county of Union to modify the cooperative agreement at date of June twenty-eleven. And move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
And the new items. Madam President, I offer the accompanying resolution identified as R two fifty-nine dash fourteen, R two sixty dash fourteen, and R two sixty-one dash fourteen, and N C twenty-fourteen dash eleven, which were not set forth at the agenda, at the agenda fixing session of June tenth, two thousand and fourteen, to be now considered.
Any second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. Chairman, will you offer the said resolutions?
Madam President. Two fifty, R two fifty-nine dash fourteen. Madam President, members of the, of the governing body, I hereby introduce resolution R two fifty-nine dash fourteen. Authorizing the renewal of Watch Out Liquors. Trading as Plainfield Liquors. And move for its adoption.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries.
I hereby introduce resolution.
We can have a little roll call for new items to be placed on the agenda. Thank you. These are, these items could be placed on the agenda for consideration, these are the marks. Okay, with that being said, we have a call, we have a roll call. Councilwoman Brown, Gries?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cusson-Hurts?
Yes.
Are we doing these individuals?
Could be placed on the agenda.
I hereby introduce resolution two sixty dash fourteen. Modern Plainfield High School alumni, former state members, and thirty organizations of their election to the Hall of Fame and move for its adoption.
Second. Madam President, we have a roll call. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Gries?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
I'm sorry.
Council President Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution being submitted, Chairman.
I hereby introduce resolution two sixty-one dash fourteen to enter into a New Jersey state contract with Xerox Corporation and move for its adoption.
Second.
Um, then coordinate roll call please. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Gries?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Council President Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution being added to the agenda.
I hereby introduce ordinance N C twenty-fourteen dash eleven, an ordinance to amend and sub amend chapter nine, article nine, public entertainment to amend section three and include section eleven A and section eleven B of the municipal code of the city of Plainfield, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-one.
Any second?
Second.
Um, I have a question, just didn't, um, make the agenda from last week. Is there any way you can amend it down? You guys took out, you guys actually put in the resolution that organizations can only have two, I mean, one there a year, can we change that? I mean, I'll go with the rest of the items that are in the resolution, I mean, if, if it's the willing of, of the government body.
Yeah, absolutely, can done by a motion to amend.
Motion. I, I have a question. So, so you say that people can have more than one?
Right.
I guess my objection and what I think, the reason why I think that it should be one is because there are so many organizations in the city. And, um, you know, and looking at weekends and, and, you know, times that people can have these things. I think that, you know, this would enable other organizations to have, you know, a bite of the apple, you know, in terms of putting on some events. Especially since, you know, the events that we've seen, for example, by a couple of these, um, bars, you know, just takes up a whole weekend and, um, you know, it's a lot of alcohol and so forth. And there may be other, other, um, people, groups who may want to do other kinds of events. So I think just to, you know, I think that one, one event per year, a major event like that should be enough. Thank you.
I tend to disagree with, um, my colleague. Other entities have the same resources to put in their petitions to have events if they choose to. We do have one, a couple of these, um, individuals who might have, who've been having two events for a very long time. And this also brings in revenue to the city of Plainfield. So, I mean, this, this has been going on for, for an extremely long time. So to cut it down to one, when it's bringing revenue into the city of Plainfield, I don't see why we should just take that away. Again, any entity have the right to apply for, to, to put in a petition with the clerk's office if they choose to have it during that time. And I believe it has to be in by sixty days. So I don't, I don't see where we have to, as a, well, for myself, I can't just pardon this ordinance taken from these individuals when it's bringing revenue into the city of Plainfield.
Well, can I just, I would just, just rebut quickly. I don't know that it brings any revenue into the city. Um, I haven't seen any data on that, but that's just one point. The other thing is, I think we also have to be mindful of, you know, the public and of businesses. For example, um, one of the businesses that, you know, Verona's, right? We already discussed, you know, last week, you know, the impact, the negative impact they had, that multiple festivals have on our businesses who do pay taxes in this city. And I thought we were going to have, um, I thought there was going to be a discussion and, you know, have some of the businesses come and speak about that from their perspective. So, thank you.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Okay.
What are the fees that these establishments pay to the city of Plainfield per event, per day?
Twenty-five hundred dollars per day.
Some of the events are Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That's money that's coming back to the city of Plainfield. Now, I also ask that the, um, police department, I believe last year, give us, um, an analysis of how much, uh, parking money are we, that we are losing having these events in the back of the Verona's nightclub. And I believe that the figures that were given to us was about maybe less than three hundred dollars, where we're getting over ten thousand dollars per event. So that is revenue to the city of Plainfield.
I actually had one more question, and it follows Council President, what you were saying. This also, in addition to just paying the fee, and I'm thinking about the idea that the marigot had for having, um, was it not the, what was it, a parade? Going from Rock Avenue or whatever. And it was brought out that, you know, all the costs associated with, you know, blocking off streets, et cetera. We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in police overtime, fire, et cetera. Um, you know, it would basically be the same as, you know, when the city has its July fourth parade. So in addition to those, the, the fee, especially then the license fee, they also would have to pick up all the costs of police, fire, public works, picking up garbage, you know, sawhorses and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, absolutely, this, this ordinance allows for the city to recruit all costs associated, police, fire, public works, um, and, and the health department as well. Any, any fees that we have will now be escrowed to the clerk's office. The clerk will establish a, an estimate of those fees, escrow of those fees.
escrow those fees, and then draw from that money in the event that we have costs that are beyond what the, beyond the permit cost. So, you're saying that this came out of administration because you have a problem with one organization having more than one because of the cost to the city, as our Councilwoman Rebecca has said? No. Uh, no. The, the, there's two separate sections. I think there's two. There's, yeah, there's two focuses of this ordinance. One is to recruit our costs associated with the events. And then the second was to impose additional limitations on events. First, that they would only be three days in length. Two, that they would not go beyond eleven o'clock at night. I got you. And the third being that there would only be one event per year. And this is a proposal for the council to do with it as a.
I would like to say.
I feel with all the other stipulations, I, you know, the summer is very, very short. I don't see any reason why they couldn't have at least two events for the summer. And because we're, they're actually bringing money back into the city. They're bringing so many people in who doesn't really know about Plainfield. We're getting good advertisement word of mouth, which is better than anything we can pay for. So, I really do not see, you know, in my opinion, I would say I would limit it to two. I would go more than one. I would limit it to two.
One of the things that this would do by limiting to one, it would allow us to have even more festivals from different organizations to really introduce them to the Plainfield. We're still going to get the same fees because we're going to still charge them the same fees. But it actually exposes other organizations and groups to Plainfield and us to the tax fee of those other.
Has anybody been refused? Anybody who came for an application? Has anybody been refused so far?
So, what I suggest to administration is that if you know of someone that have requested a permit, to tell them to get their paperwork into the city clerk's office so that they can have their festivals also.
Competition.
Thank you. Okay, can we amend this down?
Can we second?
Yeah. Okay, so a motion to amend to take out the language of having one event per year.
But you were limiting it to have one.
No, no.
No, not one or more.
Two, one more than two.
No more than two, yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Could you do some discussion?
Okay.
This is a different aspect of the discussion. I mean, I think, I think the ordinance, the way it was written is fine. I think the amendment is probably okay. I think it's okay because the council still has the right to approve or deny individual applications, separate from this ordinance, right?
This is purely a council approval. This is not administrative.
So, council members, my concern is more that there's nothing stopping a future applicant from making lots of campaign donations and getting the council's support at the expense of residents. Some of them get annoyed with the noise and possibly business owners who may be losing business. So, I think that, I think it's a good thing that we strengthen the ordinance. So, I, I mean, I like that the original version going to two per year for applicant. I can live with it as long as we have better control over the noise and as long as we have input from the merchants. So, I mean, there's still an opportunity to have input from the merchants. We asked for that. And I want to repeat that request to the administration that we bring, because I think at the last meeting, we said not only did we want the administration to get input, but we wanted that to come before us for some discussion and get some input from the merchants. So, you know, this is a two-reading process. So, can we do that? Do the council agrees?
Aye.
Will we get the Sid group to come before us? Talk with us?
Yes. So, the amendment is on the floor. It has been seconded. And you guys are going to reach out to Sid to get their applause? And that's reasonable. Okay, can I roll call an amendment? Council President, Mr. Carrick. This ordinance, right here, N C 2014-11, we are going to make a motion to amend to include this item up for first reading as amended, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this motion here is to include this item as amended?
As amended.
For first reading?
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Grease?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
This resolution will be added to the agenda as introduction of ordinance on first reading. Thank you.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Council President, will you need to vote on all the others?
Right.
To 2014-12.
No. You got to go back to new items to vote on them as, he just voted on them to put them on there. Now we have to vote.
Yes.
That's for R 259.
New items on the agenda. I offer the accompanying resolutions identified as R 259-14.
No.
Now, what can they vote? You're voting on them.
Yes. Excuse me. All the new items that we want to put on the agenda, now we have to vote for them.
Okay, so we voted on them.
Those items are on the agenda during June 10th Agenda Fixing Session. They listed as new items.
So, we're here.
So, now we have to, we voted to put them on there. So, now we have to vote to approve them.
We're voting to approve?
Yes.
R 259-14. Do I do it individually or?
Yes, individually.
R 260-14 and R 261-14.
And move for adoption.
Move for adoption. I move for adoption.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We're voting on all three at once?
At once?
Is that okay?
Let me go ahead and do the second.
You have to do the second.
All right.
R 259. Give her a chance, audience. Give her a chance. She's through. Give her a chance. Give her a chance.
I move that two, R 259-14, go on the agenda.
We are going to R 259.
R 259.
If we move for now.
And move for adoption.
The move on, yes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I roll call? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Grease?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
R 259, one four, has been adopted.
I move to adopt two, R 260-14, I move for adoption.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
I move R, R 261-14, I move for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
And N C 2014, 2014-11.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
Yes. Can I have a roll call? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Grease? Grease?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The ordinance has been moved to be introduced on agenda for first reading. Thank you. We now will come to ordinance on first reading. Mr. Chairman, will you please offer the following ordinance for first reading? That's N C 2014-11 as amended.
N C. I offer N C 2014-11 as amended.
Yes.
And move for it to be adopted.
Excuse me. We just did that.
Yeah, not that.
So, you have to go to the next one.
N C 2014-12.
Yes.
And move for.
Council President? No.
No.
No. No, hold on a second. Hold on a second. She did it.
Madam President, under introduction of ordinance on first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as N C 2014-11. An ordinance.
As amended.
An ordinance to amend and sup, as amended. And supplement Chapter 9, Article 9, public entertainment to amend Section 3 and including it, Section 11A and Section B of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1997. And move for adoption.
Second. No, the clerk's office confirms with the reading of the ordinance by Chairman Reed.
The clerk's office, oh. I move the ordinance be adopted on first reading and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Council Chambers located at 325 Wacham Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, July 14, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, Madam Roll Call? Yes, Council President. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Grease?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
This ordinance has been approved on first reading. Chairman, will you please offer N C 2014-12 for first reading?
Madam President, under the introduction of ordinances on first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as N C 2014-12, an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 10, morals and conduct, Article 11, smoking prohibited in municipal buildings and city agencies. Section 1, definitions of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971. A request that the title be read.
The clerk's office confirms with the reading of the ordinance by Chairman Reed.
I move. I move the ordinance be adopted on first reading and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Council Chambers located at 325 Wacham Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, July 14, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Can I get a second? Second. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Grease?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Ordinance pending, move for first reading. Chairman, will you please offer N C 2014-13 on first reading?
13.
Yes, 13 for first reading.
Madam President, under introduction of ordinance on the first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as N C 2014-12, an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971, as requested, the title to be read. as requested, the title to be read.
The Court Office confirms with the reading of the ordinance that she agreed.
I move that the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Council Chambers located at 325 Watcham Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, July 14th, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, may I have your call?
Counselwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Counsel President Rivers?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved to... 2000, I'm sorry. The ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Chairman, will you please offer NC 2014-14 in the first action?
Madam President, under the introduction of ordinances on first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as NC 2014-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 11, Personal Article 7, compensation and pay periods, and creating a new sanction... Section 11, colon, 7, dash, 8, entitled Direct Deposit of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971, and request that the title be read.
Court Office confirms with the reading of the ordinance that she agreed. I'm sorry, Reeves? Reeves?
I move the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Council Chambers located at 325 Watcham Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, July 14th, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the title can be heard.
Can I get a second?
Second.
What's up? I have comments. I had several employees that have come to me in reference to this, having their pay check, direct deposit, and they basically stated they don't have accounts. They don't have checking accounts. They can't get checking accounts. And they're... and when I asked them to go and research getting account through credit unions, they had been denied for getting their checks, direct deposit into credit unions. So at this time, I cannot support such a... such an ordinance, because who am I to tell them what to do with their paycheck? And, you know, I know that we basically stated we can carry this out to 2014, 2015, but there are several employees that state that they do not have checking accounts or savings accounts.
I have a question. It's just related, if you know how many we are talking about. We're talking about 10 people, 20 people, 5 people, 13 people?
I don't know exactly the people, but to Counsel President's point, in addition to setting up accounts, there is also a mechanism now that will allow for debit cards to use to make sure that people who don't have accounts can utilize debit cards, and you can send it directly to a debit card for their utilization.
Is there a fee applied to that debit card?
No. No.
No fee at all?
I don't have a fee on my debit card now. I use credit.
Because you have a checking account.
Why, credit.
Yeah.
But they will also be able to utilize the debit account, and... Oh, so this part's going to be difficult, because not only do you not want to do it at the beginning of the year, I was going to ask you to do it for the fourth quarter. As opposed to... But I think if the governing body considers the debit accounts as one of the mechanisms that can be utilized by people who don't have the requisite... You got to try.
I know you got to try, but...
I have a question.
But only if Mr. Wilson has something to say about the free... The free, you said, it's a free debit card, no fees at all?
We have scheduled or are scheduling a meeting with a group by the name of TFJ that is one of the manufacturers and managers of these kinds of electronic cards. It's not really a pure debit card, but there are no fees associated, is what we've been told to date. We'll be sitting down with them to get all the definitive answers and to look at the clauses and make sure we understand how it works so that we can come back and say that there are indeed no fees, you know? But that's all.
Can we get that in writing, so that... Because it would be hard for me to believe that there are...
We have it in writing right now, but what I'm saying is when we meet with them, we will look at the legal documents and make sure that that's what it is. And there was a question about how many people are we talking about? It's 140 people today.
Right, that don't have... that don't have...
No, 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 no. That don't have direct deposit.
Right. That's a direct deposit.
That's different than not having the means of doing.
Question. 140 people have to take a real check. Where do they go? Where do they get a deposit? For cash? Don't they have to pay fees right now at a check cashing place?
They get a check to get paid.
If you happen to use a check cashing place, yes, there's a fairly significant fee to cash that check. Yes, that's what people...
I spoke to an individual that had an account that just do not want their paycheck deposited into their account, and that's their right. So they're not paying a fee to have their check cashed. But I'm just one vote.
But remember, it's good business from our perspective. We save 51 cents, 1 cent per check, every pay period, you know, for this, and it's not uncommon. You know, many companies have done it for years where it's direct deposit, direct deposit only. AT&amp;T would be one that, that's all you had. You had no choice. It was mandatory direct deposit.
I actually worked for one, a couple of jobs ago. Accelera Learning.
Sandy, I'm here.
I said I actually worked for one a couple of jobs ago. Accelera Learning did direct deposit for all their employees. When they initially, you get a live check, but right after that, they insist that you do direct deposit. They're probably an old company, so I guess they can insist whatever they want, but there are companies that do do it.
Can I ask a question? With the 51 cent, when we print out the pay stub, we have to print a pay stub and give it to each employee anymore, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then the other portion of that pay stub, it says void, is that correct?
And for those with direct deposit, yes, it says void.
So how are we saving this 51 cent? The only difference between putting a void is putting the amount of the tax.
No, we get bills from paychecks that charge us 51 cents, and there are bank fees associated with it and everything else. So it's just good business for us. It also takes less personnel time if we're doing direct deposit as well.
Okay. Have this been discussed all over the union? Anybody that they come forward and complain or... Just curious.
Counsel, Counsel President. The human research director, let me see.
No, I have not had any feedback from the unions on this ordinance. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
With regards to the check stub, as you know, we are moving to an electronic HR system that we plan to have in place by January 1, which would coincide with this. Employees will then be able to access their information online, download their check stubs, download their sick and vacation time. Right now, we don't have that. We do have... We're in the process of doing the RFP right now. It's been put out, and we would have this in place by January 1, where they will be able to go online and download all of their past check stubs as well as the current ones. So we will not be printing the checks once this goes into place, and then, yes, there would be a savings facility.
And you said you have not had any discussions with the unions?
I have not had any discussions with the unions. They know that this ordinance is before you. I have... I was surprised to see the FOA here on last week, because no unions have come to me and said that they have had issues with us putting forth this ordinance.
Okay, please, call for the vote. Oh, is that... Call for the vote? Give me a second. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Counselwoman Brown?
There are certainly arguments on both sides. I'm going to have to stay.
Counselwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Reeves?
Yes.
Counsel President Rivers?
No.
So I have one to stay. Two names, and... Three in favor? Bells. Bells. Bells, what does that spell?
Bells.
Okay, we'll move along.
Madam President, under introduction of ordinance on first reading, I introduce the accompanying ordinance identified as NC 2014-12, an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 2, Article 2, City Council to amend Section 9 of regular meetings and require that all City Council meetings be televised, and request that the title be read.
Court Office confirms with the reading of the ordinance that she agreed.
I move the ordinance be adopted on first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this ordinance as required by law, and that the second reading of said ordinance shall be held at a regular meeting in the Municipal Court Council Chambers located at 325 Watcham Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, on Monday, July 14th, 2014, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, may I have your call?
Counselwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Counsel President Rivers?
Yes.
Word is that's adopted on first reading.
I'll turn it back over to Ms.
Okay, we have general comments. We now come to the general public segment, segment of tonight's meeting. It's almost 60 minutes have been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each person is allocated five minutes to speak. The floor is now open.
Thank you. Johnny Bridges, I'm due for the office at Avenue of Plainfield. I have two things I would like to go over with you tonight. First, I urge the City Council to pass a resolution in support of our men and women in uniform for fighting for us, for defending our freedom. Even as we speak, our Army, our Navy, our Marine Corps, our Coast Guard, and our Air Force do... do want our support, because we have sons and daughters from Plainfield who are serving in our military forces. We failed to do so during the war in Vietnam. 16 of our men who fought over there in Vietnam lost their lives in doing so, fighting for our country. And in honor, I'd like to sing. They loved us so. Every day in our hazard ways, they told us so. In honesty, in affection, they told us so. They loved us so. Every day in our hazard ways, they showed us so. With loyalty and bravery, they showed us so. They were our defenders, and they kept us free. They took it all to guard us and fought for liberty. They loved us so. And we should know. For we love them so. Now, the other thing I want to go over with you is that we need to reactivating Milunberg. We need a hospital. We need it badly, and we need a staff. We need a hospital that is capable of mission. We need a hospital that can serve Plainfield and its surrounding areas. We need that hospital badly. Ever since most of Milunberg closed four, five years ago, I have been aching to get the City Council to do something and also for the powers that be to reactivating Milunberg. We need a hospital that's capable of mission. We need a hospital badly, because we are living in dangerous times, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm not talking about head colds or earaches. I'm talking about many people's lives. And the sooner we reactivating Milunberg, the better off we all will be. Don't make us so clear.
Yes, you do, Joe.
My name is Robert Furr, and I'm attorney representing the Rambamba Inn, which was your R22614, which was tabled. I gather the next meeting is July 7. The license will expire on June 30. So we will have a situation where the renewal is not being acted on in time for this license to be renewed without its expiration. May I respectfully suggest that the license be approved with the reservation of the council hearing what they want from the police department regarding conditions at the next meeting. But approve the license tonight, so we do not have a situation with an expiration in the meantime.
Mr. Furr, if I may add, we have the council. You can certainly see an ad interim permit, which we grant for 30 days. And what will happen is the director will call the city. They generally call my office, and they will ask if we object. We will not object to an ad interim permit, and I think I have the approval of the council to do so. We will not object to an ad interim permit, at which time the council will have time to reconvene to discuss special conditions.
That also involves additional expense to my clients.
I'm very sorry, Mr. Furr.
Counselor, the comments.
Please. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sandy Taylor Williams. I'm with the 312 New Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. On the back of the agenda here, it has, "No speaker shall engage in personal offensive, derogatory, or abusive remarks." Does that apply to all city administration and people who work for the city? For people to just say to you anything they want? Excuse me. Deputy Clerk, would you pass these out to the... The council, please. I was at City Hall... I mean, I was at the... Thank you. I was at the... I was at the senior center on May 19. We were doing a play. And when I approached the center, my back was hurting in my leg, and I decided to go into the side door. When I tried to go into the side door, the senior that was sitting in the lunchroom wouldn't open the door, but the woman that was in the play with me saw me, and she said, "Wait a minute, Sandy. I can open the door for you." When she did, Keith Forman, who was the assistant to Sharon Brown, stood standing by the counter with a serving of food that saw her. So I came on in. We went into the room, sat down. And five minutes later, Keith comes to the door and beckons the woman to come to him. Okay, I'm looking at this, and I said to myself, now I bet he's going to reprimand her for opening the door for me. Certainly, sure enough, he did. I went to the door. We're standing in the doorway, which interrupted the play rehearsal that we were having, plus the lunching of adults who were having lunch. Keith Forman informed her that she was not to open the door for anyone. Now, there's only two doors... No, I think, why, there are four doors to the center, two in the front, two in the back. But he informed her that the door is only to be opened for the handicap. Okay, he proceeded to reprimand her, talk to her, so forth. So then I interrupted. He said, "Yes, I told her to not open the door for you. Why can't you open the door for me? This door is only for the handicapped coming, or people who have problem walking, or walkers, or so forth." So I said... But he didn't know. He does not know that I'm handicapped. I have handicap plates. I have handicap cart in my wallet that I've been carrying for years, but it wasn't his business, and I didn't tell him at the time. So anyway, he proceeded to run off his mouth, blah, blah, blah. And he said, "I said, 'Don't you come through that damn door anymore.'" "What? You cussing at me?" I stopped the whole center. Yes, I did. I stopped the whole center. "Why are you using profanity to me? Derogatory manner? I don't give a damn." "What? Do what?" That's what he said. So I told him, I said, "Well, I'll take care of it. Don't worry about it." So now, I've been reading my... read book from the city about the actions of people who work for the City of Plainfield, and I decided to press charges against him. I'm not going to have city employees, or I don't care who it is, talk to me like that, and then I'm not supposed to do anything about? Now, last week, Mr. West and I, and Sharon Brown, and Keith were there. He repeated the same thing. I said, "Don't open that damn door," and I missed it. Now, I want to bring charges against Mr. Forman Ford. I don't care what happens to him. He loses job or whatever. I don't know. But for him to speak to me in that manner, and like I told him last week, I do have a handicap leading on my car, and I am handicapped. At times, my back gives out, my leg gives out, so I have a right to go into that door. Now, as he explained to me that the door is on...
Make a motion to the center, Taylor.
All those in favor? I... Any opposed in your stance with motion, Karen?
So I feel as if he needs to be reprimanded some kind of way. Now, I don't know what's going to happen when I go to court. I hope that this will be addressed to anyone in the future to just not abuse with seniors, and I do not appreciate it, and I'm not going to stand for it. So that's all I have to say right now, but I have another case coming up against Sharon Brown also. Thank you.
Can I ask that the demonstration addresses are... They are. I'm just concerned that she's been here before.
Yes.
She's been here before, and certainly before you arrived. It is my understanding that there's a history. And it wasn't meant to be a joke. I mean, it's a fact.
You're right. I'm serious.
That there... You know, and so the purpose of my meeting last week was to deal with a different allegation. And it turns out that it has a lot of history, and it's been before the council in the past, as well as prior administrations. And there hasn't been justice from the perspective of the individual. You know, so on one hand, she indicated to me that unless she saw a major change in staffing, it's the only thing that would make her satisfied. But I am meeting with a variety of people. In fact, I was down there today and made it known that I was available to talk about any suggestions, comments, complaints, you know, with regard to the way things are running. Now, in terms of the door, there are door controls, because we're trying to make sure that things are conducted in a safe manner. You know, you don't want people to be able to walk in anywhere and not have it supervised. And so, you know, there is certainly something that took place between the two parties. And I wasn't dealing with that one specifically. I will add that to the list. But again, there is a history of matters that have not gone the way people would like them to go. And so I'm looking to get a better handle as to what needs to be done. And there will be meetings with other members of the center. But so far, I've not been able to come up with individuals who really, you know, can point to factual situations, you know, that I can address. And a lot of this is history. The May 19 incident is the only thing that's current. Most of it is prior to 2014, you know, and prior to 2013. And so I am looking to make sure that I understand and I don't leave the stone unturned, you know, because I'm dealing with a complaint. But at this point in time, there is a lot of history. And I was told that there's very little I can do without a major organizational change that would leave the individual happy.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoma, I was 5:35, I was searching. First of all, we need to each and every one of you, I see past administration backing all this. I wasn't going to speak. But just the way you worded it sometimes, it bothers me. I don't care if a citizen come to you a thousand times. When you go out to run for election, you go back to these same people. So they should be able to come to you if they have a complaint. Excuse me? And every, you don't judge one situation and put them all together and say, "Oh, this is something that has been going on." If, there's a thing called senior abuse, just like it's children abuse. And if any employee of any entity, I don't care if it's the city, housing authority, PMU, school board, they should be handled. No one has the right to cuss a senior, nevertheless a child, regardless. So, okay, yes, we all hear it. But now you've got another matter. Because everybody feels like they can do anything they want to and it's not going to be taken care of. You have to watch every situation. That's all I'm going to say. I put a matter, and I would like to bring up school board, housing, high school, all of that together because you're all different. But there was a young lady that kept complaining about what's going on in her child at the school. And I've been six, so I wasn't able to handle it like I usually do because she's one of my residents. And I kept saying, let me call the school. So I called this principal and I said, "You know what? Okay, this child might be a little hyper, but all children are hyper." I said, "But you just don't take that one situation and leave it there. Something is going on." And then I thought about Reverend Tracy Brown one day when I was in her service. And she said, "Sometimes all you gotta do is fall on your knees and pray." I prayed for that lady. And guess what happened? Last week, that same teacher that was doing all the complaining hit that lady's child. Now the school said, "I call diapers." Now, everybody's saying, "Oh, this goes far." Just don't look at one situation and tie it into one knot. Because now you've got another one. And if she go to the state and report it for senior abuse, then you're going to be in worse trouble than you are today. Don't just throw it on the table, sweep it under the rug saying, "Oh, she just here every month, she gonna be here all..." Then she come here a thousand times. Now you've got another complaint. No employee had the right to cuss a senior, nevertheless. And y'all need to take it serious. Sick of y'all looking at me. Firing people and everything else.
Lamar Maxson, 1040 Hillside Avenue. I, you know, every year, you know, the newspapers have diminished. Went out of business and the internet and different blogs are the way you get information. I can recall reading about the Plainfield franchise fees. And I think it's a substantial amount of money. Sometimes I'm looking for reasons why things happen. It might be four, $500,000 that Plainfield may be looking at. It's my understanding that this was brought to the attention of the administration through Lamar Maxson. There's reasons sometimes that people don't want you in control. I don't know where that money goes when it comes in. Maybe I misunderstood the amount of money. But I know it's a substantial amount of money from files into Comcast. A lot of money. Money makes people act funny. I found out that this money, when it comes in, I think it should go into the media department or for public information to rebrand the city, so to speak. I don't know where that term came from, but I think the administration came up with that. My son also told me about his application for the civil service certification. That came through Human Resources, pretty sure that does. And he had problems getting them to respond. Meanwhile, while he was going through these changes, it's my understanding that they didn't respond in a timely manner. Also, during that time, that's when the title to his job changed. And I know, like, a lot of people, a lot in corporate America, a lot of times they change their job title, put other people in that position, give them more money, give you less money, you know, it'll work like that. And that's not good. I'm looking and trying to see, you know, how clear, you know, it was for getting rid of my son. He's somebody I love and he's a hardworking man, he's a good man. He's an asset to this city. And he was wrong. And I get emotional about it. And I guess that everybody can understand that because you don't want your children hurt. If he had did something wrong, I would have been the first one to stand up and say, "Man, you're wrong. You deserve what you got. You didn't deserve what he got."
Can I just ask a question to the administration? Something just, I think it went over my head. Did, can't go back and forth with the president, but there's some monies coming into the city from these franchises?
Yes, House President. We negotiate with Comcast and Verizon. Well, we don't negotiate much with Verizon because they basically have, like I said, fees. But with Comcast, we have a negotiation that they pay the city of Plainfield franchise fee. That fee, as we're negotiating now, will be used for a number of things. We're still in negotiations with Comcast on what we can or can't use the fees for. We will be bringing that to the city council as soon as that negotiation is finished shortly. We have a meeting scheduled when the Comcast representatives will...
Like the next month?
This month, later this month. So we'll be coming back to the council with that. So the franchise fee hasn't been designated for any particular thing right now. But we are asking for a substantial amount of money for the franchise. I don't think we're going to be getting that amount of money, but we're asking for it.
So you're in negotiations with the Comcast franchise. Is that with the full Comcast committee? Cablevision, cable television committee, which I serve on?
We have been negotiating with the full committee and we have also been talking about it as a administration.
So is the president of that committee involved in those negotiations?
Yes.
Is the president of the committee still, will the president of the committee still be involved in those negotiations?
Highly unlikely.
Is there... Can't go back and forth. Thank you.
What would they use for the past, though?
I know at one time, I asked the silver committee, we got funds to equip a studio at the school, at the, at Plainfield High School and at Maxson School. There were studios that were underwritten by Comcast for use for kids in schools.
Okay, so there is no, there's no vote in the media department? It's just discretionary funds or...
Well, that was what we negotiated that time. We can negotiate other things that they could support in media or telecommunications.
I could also add that, I'm looking back 10 years or so. Many of those years, probably less so now, but many of those years, some of the funds were diverted for purposes than what is expected, I guess, from those negotiations. You know, various administrations had tax increases to address and deficits. That's a history. I'm not advocating for it, but that's happened.
Ms. Oliver, 127 Hollywood Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. First, I want to recommend the council. You guys say that you won't go back and forth when it's time for the public, but you do it every time. And it's not clear to us because we have to sit there and listen to you guys take up our time. So it's not clear to us. The other thing that I want to talk about is the licenses for the bars and the nightclubs and so forth. Sanhoma, I think, is being tabled over on Second, on East Second and Garfield. I don't know how many times I have stood up here and asked this council to do something about that area. That area is a bad area. We have the Bobo's Chinese restaurant right next door to it. And it is consistently, the people are consistently in there. They are not buying food. We know that there are illegal drugs in there. We know that they're selling boozy cigarettes. But yet it's still the council, the administration, no one does anything about it. And I am really tired of it. I don't know what you guys are going to do. Because just two weeks ago, when we were sitting up in a meeting about ethics against Mayor Mack, a guy was being shot right around that same area. You didn't hear about that in the blogs or you didn't hear about that in the news either. But again, what is it going to take for this council, for this administration to do something besides bickering back and forth, fighting back and forth with each other? I'm really tired of it. And I hope something is done about it soon. And another thing, my last thing, I think that you guys really need to consider what you have done to Lamar Maxson. I said, I read a letter last week about the administration firing Lamar Maxson. I think it's really horrendous what you have done and you really need to reconsider hiring him back. Because again, there are seniors sitting at home that do not, cannot get out, and that TV is the only thing that they have, you know, to know what is really going on in the city. So I'm again appealing to Mayor Mack and the city administration to work with the council, to work with Lamar, and do what you can to bring him back. Because I am, I'm a little confused. Because you're hiring this young lady and I've seen her at these meetings. And I thought she was working in conjunction with Lamar, only to find out what's going on. We need some answers. And I tell you one thing, we're not going away. Thank you.
Okay, sure, I just want, I'll address her person.
You can address the public, but I just want the citizens to finish it. Can you address the public?
Yes, it worked for the citizens. You know, it worked for what was, as Dee said, you know, I don't think that, I think the majority of the council wants to rehire, have Mr. Lamar Maxson rehired. The majority of the council, we're working hard to meet with the mayor to see what can be done, that this may be, that this injustice may be overturned. And in reference to some of the illegal activity that goes on in the city, whenever I hear of something, matter of fact, just recently, I found a store that was, that was selling prescription drugs, antibiotics from a gas station. And I called up Mr. Riley right away and let him know what was going on in this store. Whenever I hear any type of criminal activity, or if I see it or hear about it, I'm fast to call Mr. Riley and let him know what's going on.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Oliver, 123 Sumner Avenue. I'm back again about Milk Campbell Field. This time we have some pictures. I was out there today walking and the benches out there that's for the citizens and children to sit on are falling apart. I have pictures of one where the bench either fell apart, but they failed to remove the screws that sticks out. And I'm just afraid that either a citizen or a child, your child, my grandchild, or... Okay, they're going to get hurt. And then it's going to be too late to say what we should have done. So I felt as a citizen that I should bring this to the council's attention. That new benches need to be put out there, but this one definitely needs to be removed immediately. Because school is about to be out. The children are going to frequent at Milk Campbell and all the parks more. But this is a danger and I have pictures for each council person to take a look at. And I don't want to be out there walking, I'm not yesterday's Milk either. I fall on this bench. Because you know what? It's rusty and it doesn't need to be moved. Couple months back also, I brought to your attention that I frequent out there. I'm a taxpayer. And I don't like the walking trail for myself and no one else. It goes into the woods, it's wooded up in that area, it's unsafe. I would like to walk the trail, but no one could see if something happened to me or anyone else out there. But I definitely want you to look at this and it needs to be taken care of immediately because it's dangerous. And we don't want no loss of life and the city definitely does need any lawsuits.
Phil, the side is for Kewa, Shore Avenue. I try to be respectful, but when people violate your privacy and even the officials, that gets you into a really, really bad feelings. But since I asked him the president and council last week, I need the resolution that you passed to appoint some members of the council to follow me, to go to my house, or the place I live, it's not my house, or the place I live, you question if I live there. It doesn't matter. So now I live there, so now what? But that's not really the point. The point is that when you've been appointed in that position, you have to have a good moral character. You must follow the constitution. You have to support the state of New Jersey. And the constitution says, "We the people, for the people, and only the people." And how come, by any chance, somebody of the members of the council take an option to follow someone? When all the Hispanics go or the immigrants go to immigration to acquire the citizenship, one of the questions is, have you ever persecuted someone because of religion, political opinion, social group? Or that's not a good moral character, the person could not be a citizen. Why is it that we forgot what is the constitution in my constitutional rights? To represent the people that I could not be representing? Why is it that do not, your members of the council have not even the second to really know who I really am? And what had been my constitution to this town? And how come somebody could have the ability to question my integrity? I don't have money. But the only thing I do have is my integrity, my education and my support and my commitment and what I have support to this town. Commissioner Harris and I have fought many times and helped the community and helped the childrens. I have not been here invisible. The building that I am is not invisible. The place that I live is not invisible. And for somebody in this council to do that, I want to pay charges. But then again, I want for the resolution of the pressing consent to give it to me. That way, I will resent for reckoning. And the last thing that I want to leave, many times that people come to this chamber to talk about the Hispanic community and/or the Latino community. The Latino community, the Hispanics have been let out. It's time that we put somebody in this chamber, when you have the meetings, and translate this meeting for the Hispanics to know how we've been treated or how we've been calling, or what is it that we do. Somebody say, "We're not taxpayers." Well, we are. If I pay rent, one dollar, maybe $2 out of my rent, go to pay the taxes. If I pay rent, one dollar, maybe two dollars out of my rent go to pay the taxes in the city. All these people that live in this town, like they say, these people, all the Hispanics and Latinos that live in this town, have contributed to this town great time. When we pay rent, the rent money also go to pay taxes. The owners of the businesses now go there to another state and get the money that they have, and their trips, and pay your taxes. Every single business in this community pay rent. Every single business in this community pay taxes. The owners pay taxes. Where we live, we pay taxes. If, and I say to you, when I came here, if you need me, come on, walk the street, the police have done it, all the licenses, I have been here. I'm there, I'm quarter to six, I live in a toy, what is the difference? Why, I don't want to know what you need, but why is the difference? If I sleep three hours in one place, and I work here the whole time, what is the difference? Why is the difference? Because I defend what I believe on the constitution of this country, when I teach the people because we become a citizens, and every day we will have citizens that are immigrants. And it's about time that the Hispanic community stand up and start to vote our way. But you know, because of these meetings are not in Spanish, when all of you go there for elections, they don't know what are you doing. They don't know anything about what happened in these meetings and how we will call it. Why don't your council members say, the Hispanics or Latino, whatever you call it there, what do you mean? We are Hispanics and we are also Latinos. The thing is that the Latino world has changed, the Hispanic world has changed because a group of people say that we should call it Latino because it's many countries, and that's why it became to be Latino.
Make a motion to extend the time.
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In the polls, in the extensions, motion carries.
Thank you. So that's the reason they call us Latinos, and that's why it's always so many people is confused of how can call the community. But most of all, it doesn't matter how we call it, we live in this town, we sleep in this town, we work on this town, we spend our money in this town, we are part of every single one of this town. And you part of me and I'm part of you. And if you don't want to work with us, then come on, you represented, you all represented us. And this very change that I know of you, you are priests in the churches, what are you priests? What is it that you believe these people? A hate, a persecution? What are you teaching the people? The religion is not about, we can be free of thinking and be political anytime we want it. This is a constitutional right. I can support anyone I want to support, also the same people. And in order for me to vote, I must be a citizen. Okay? And we don't have any citizens that have become citizens throughout my program. We, every year we have two dinners, and every dinner we have more than 200 people. But the Hispanic community need to wake up because we give too much contribution to this town, and we have less respect every time. Thank you.
Can I just ask the question? She said a resolution. Mrs. Gonzalez, what was the resolution that you were requesting?
The resolution was about if the city council have approved any of the city council members to follow me, to go to my place of living and ask if I live there.
One, two, three, Sumner Avenue. I want to back up something my wife had brought me in though. Years ago, before maybe it was here, I used to have the merchants of Plainfield, Pettis, all them suburban jurors. We started beautifying Plainfield. Milk Campbell Field was one of those. The only problem with Milk Campbell Field was, is that in the old days, what they did, where the trees are at, they dropped their rubbish, their leaves and everything back in the woods right there. It was never cleaned out. Right now, what has happened to Milk Campbell Field, no longer the tennis courts there, but the benches, my wife spoke of benches. Those benches have nails sticking out of them. Those benches are falling apart. She didn't say, what is needed is replacement of benches, like the ill-placed benches downtown that people sit on waiting for jobs. Okay? So why don't we keep Plainfield beautiful? I don't know of any of you who was playing without the Milk Campbell Field. This is one of the most beautiful places we have in all of Plainfield. Forget Cedar Brook Park. Milk Campbell Field is such a beautiful place. It's well manicured by public works, but there are things that are missing. The woods now there needs to be thinned out, the dry, the, I call it Waste Twenty-Three, that's the leaves, everything needs to be removed. Benches need to be replaced, and also the tennis court need to be replaced. Somewhere, if all of you city council members, whether whatever ward you're in, should be looking at the beautification of Plainfield, and go out to Milk Campbell Field and enjoy the beauty of it. May I be in the second ward, whatever? If you haven't been out there, you should take a look at it. And then say yourself, yes, there needs some improvement. Let's prove it in minor benches, like she said earlier. Someone is going to get hurt with the nails sticking out of those benches. I go out there myself, and I see it. I wasn't going to say anything, but she brought it up, and I do agree with her. You should go out there. And let's look at Plainfield as a place of beauty that's so much here that we are not doing. As I said earlier, I create the merchants of Plainfield, and most of you here do not remember that, but it was, I still have my T-shirts and everything. So think about this, Plainfield is a beautiful place. That's before we used to be on hands and knees putting flowers down all around the parks everywhere. Many of you don't know, I did a lot of work in Plainfield, and I'm still here. I just think that we all should get together and just bring out the beauty of what we have.
Can someone address that?
Well, we got a few things that needs to be addressed by administration, but I just wanted to give the public a opportunity to share their thoughts. Yeah, can we just give them, if we give them an hour as the clock is ticking, we're going to address all the issues.
Good evening again, Sharon Robinson Griggs, two-sixteenth Pemberton Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. I had to get back and just kind of shed some light on three situations that I heard discussed tonight. The first one is with regard to, and I know we probably should not be mentioning names of employees or former employees, but I have to say that under my administration, I hired the young lady who is behind the camera right now, and she has done and continues to do a great job for the city of Plainfield. But I also believe that someone who was just released from the media division, who we have discussed here this evening, should be brought back. And both of those individuals, in my estimation, and I think I'm hearing the sentiment here and in the community, they should return to being employees for the city of Plainfield, full-time employees. There's a need for both of them, and I believe that there is some funding there. So please consider that as you are thinking about what to do to move forward. The second thing is, I did hear some comments with regard to some negative things unfortunately that had gone on in the past, some negative feelings with regard to one individual in particular, and those, some of the folks who work for our senior citizen center. Just as many of you on the council, I love our seniors, I love our veterans, I know you do as well. And so when things came up in the past, under my former administration, I then asked one individual, and I'm not going to name her, you heard from her tonight, but I invited her to come into City Hall and see how can we work this out? Because there was so much back and forth that was going on over there. And she came in, I understand that she is an excellent seamstress, she does a lot of sewing, and she wanted to have a fashion show. She wanted me to authorize her to have a fashion show at the senior citizen center, which I was all for, until she said she wanted to exclude the seniors and veterans who are there, as well as the director over there. How could we possibly do that? When I said I could not authorize that because I didn't think that that would be fair to the other members there, that was an issue for her. And in turn, in this room, when I sat over there, I was referred to as the D. So I think the best thing that everybody should know, we don't want anybody cursing at anybody or being disrespectful, but we have to learn respect across the board. Even, and I'm going to go into the third item, then we'll sit down, and that is the last person, a female who spoke a moment ago. We supported our Latino brothers and sisters under my administration, as well as you do now under this administration. We worked with Carmen Salavera, with Angels for Action, and several programs to bring our Latino brothers and sisters to the table. We put back to affect the Hispanic Commission and filled that until they decided to leave it. We had immigration reform workshops and programs, as well as Dream Roots programs and other things. So for anybody, any member of the Latino community to suggest that this city of Plainfield does not support them, they are totally wrong. And so I will apologize to all of you, and especially those of you who are reverence to have, have to sit here and hear somebody question your religion and what you preach at your churches. I think that is absolutely wrong. I think as the best order of business, what that individual should do here in the city of Plainfield, because as the former mayor, I did have people from this community who came to me with complaints, okay, with regard to services that that individual was doing for them, as they said, as well as fees that they were charging. I think there might be some confusion because the individual works in the building that has a sign that says Abogados Attorney. So if you're an attorney, you can charge fees. If you're not an attorney, you need to let the people know that that banner is not for that individual. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
I want you to love thirty Street, because you know, I know the hours later, I hope I'm the last speaker. But there, I have three brief comments, which I hope are brief. The first one is I do respect the concern and the opinion of the council about the employment of various sub个体 individuals. But I feel that to have an executive meeting that lasted for an hour tonight during the regular session, a business meeting, and called by, I believe, by a council person, is a disrespect for the public who come here for the business session. That said, I will go on to the amendment about the mandated deposits. I, for one, do not like mandated deposits. I do have one, the government gives it to me, a social security check, but that's the only one, and I do have a checking account. But I think that the individual has a right to receive his salary in the manner which he wants. But one of the ways to remedy that is to use the credit union route. This is for people who do not have bank deposits to top off their fees. And I think it would behoove the administration and the unions to get together and have at least one approved credit union for individuals to use, that they may feel comfortable with it, they will get their money, they don't have to carry a debit card, which I do not feel is a safe item. And that, I think, would be the solution. The third thing that I want to comment on is I hear we're talking about the events and the money brought into town. But this is hearsay, that money brought into town. I just wonder how much statistically we can find out that the merchants get increased income, or the city gets in revenue during each event. And when you know that, you have direct facts, then you can talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kim, oh, just to write that. Kim Maunfrith, thirteen forty-five East Second Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm going to be real quick about the direct deposit, and I'm happy that you're going to hold off on that because I really think it needs to be given a lot more thought than what it is. Because just here this evening, there was a very, in the beginning, a very specific conversation taking place about it, and somehow it segued into a whole different concept, and it, I think, the two just diluted each other. So if you have a valid point, somehow note it down and make sure nobody pulls you away from it. With regard to the East Second Street track, Netherwood, Garfield Avenue, all of that, I'd like to add to that cleanup, there is a storefront that the city owns. It's a hazard in working with Reverend Dean and the revitalization, excuse me, project with regard to the East Second Street track. I was able to get Mr. Jackson to send someone there to clean it up because the inside was pushing out through the window. Well, they pushed it back, and I thought a little bit better window security could have been put up, but they managed to find some plywood and just kind of stuck it up. But it's a hazard, there's mold coming out of it. If you walk past it, you smell it. So I challenge you, as far as the administration is concerned, and those who are interested in making sure that that is cleaned up. I mean, you clean up one area, you might clean up the drug area and the this and the that, but it attracts to eye swords like these buildings. For some reason, they just kind of fall in and gravitate to one another. So I hope you can do something about that because it's really ugly down there, and it is the city-owned property. Thank you.
Any more for President Trump?
Hi, Shilis Khan, one forty-one McKinley Place. I will just have to add to the East Second Street because I actually live on McKinley Place, which is off of East Second Street, and that whole track there, the Sanoma, the liquor store, the Chinese place, the store on the corner there of Johnston Avenue, I live right around the corner from all of that, and it is not nice in the summertime, I can tell you that. I look forward to the winter because not many people come out in the winter, it's too cold, but in the summer it gets to be a very busy area. I actually have two additional comments. The first is about the announcements of meetings, you know, the open public meeting law. And I know that it says that said notice is transmitted to the Courier-News and Star Ledger in January, you know, it was transmitted in January two thousand fourteen, as well as posted on the bulletin board and the city clerk's office. I can't tell you when the last time I read the Star Ledger or the Courier-News. I mean, I thank Councilwoman Williams for reminding me about these meetings, and I mean, I would just say that, you know, living in the times that we live in, it may be time to kind of update the way in which we communicate the meetings, using social media outlets, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, using some other means to make sure that the meetings are communicated to the public. Also, my second comment is about the direct deposit. And I know, you know, other people have spoken about the direct deposit, and I mean, I think that the employees of the city of Plainfield are privileged that they can have someone, that they can speak with someone, and that they have a choice and that they have input about whether their pay is direct deposited or not. I mean, I work for a company, I don't have a choice. Direct deposit is the way you're getting paid. You know, there is no choice. And I know that there is a cost savings to the company for direct deposit. We actually have direct deposit, and this year they decided they were not doing pay stubs anymore. You have to go online and get your pay stub. You know, so I mean, we're moving into different times, and you know, when it's something new, people have opposition to new, but when they see the benefits of it, I mean, now I enjoy not getting a pay stub. If I need it, I download it. If I don't need it, you know, I mean, very rarely would I look at them anyway because it's the same thing every week, you know, every time I got paid. Also, with direct deposit, you know, I worked for a company at one time, we got paid weekly, and that was great. They went to biweekly. They didn't give us a choice. We had, we had no say-so in that. So, you know, I mean, I think it's great that people are speaking to you about their opposition to direct deposit and, you know, not having that, but if there is a cost savings to the city of Plainfield for going to direct deposit, I really think that it's something that you should consider. And people are not going to appreciate change initially, but they will see the benefit to it. to it. Thank you.
Any more for the president's floor? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please? All those in favor? Any polls, any extension, motion carries? Can I get, um, Director Raleigh to come up? A few people, um, recreation director, because there's a lot of questions that were asked.
Good evening. Uh, I'd just like to make a comment to Ms. D, as well as, uh, city council, president of the city council and administration. In terms of violent crime within the city, um, you may not realize this, we're actually down. What I did is we did comparison in terms of last year, uh, quarter one, which would be January 1 to, uh, April 1st, 2013 versus January 1 to April 1st, 2014. Violent crime, which encompasses shootings, homicide, murders, rapes, weapons offenses, aggravated assault, we're actually down 62% during that time period. However, we still have a lot of work to do, don't get the wrong impression. What I do, and what my command staff do, we meet on a weekly basis and on a daily basis, and electronically, um, analyze crime, violent crime trends in certain areas. Um, so when we push our, our team down in certain areas, you might even see the mobile stabilization unit out, out in certain areas, you might see counters out in areas, certain undercovers out in certain areas. We target areas that have the most violent crime historically that we've seen over the past, and that's how we redeploy our personnel to get out and walk, to get out and maybe write tickets, um, to get out and just talk to keep, uh, people, kids, to maybe disrupt the activity. We're going to continue to do that. I know East Second Street is a hot area. Uh, we are, um, currently working in that area back and forth. There are some investigations going on throughout the city that I'm not liberty to, to explain and talk about, nor should I do that. Um, I'm proud to say that we've taken several guns off the street, um, between, um, January and now, actually, um, I guess Memorial Day weekend, we took seven guns off the street during that three, four-day period. Um, a lot of times, you don't realize that, some of that's not publicized due to the fact they lead to other investigations going forth, and we can't jeopardize those investigations. So we are moving forward, uh, we're moving the city forward. I'm going to do everything in my power to work with our internal and external resources to keep this trend moving forward. We do have work to do, I do admit that, um, I take responsibility for that, I have no problem with that, and we want to continue to move forward. However, I encourage anybody, if there's a hot area or something, that you believe that something may not be done, please email me. Uh, I'm always, uh, on my email, I respond all day and night, or, or call me. Uh, my phone number is 908-966-2294. That's my cell phone, or call me, it's, everybody has it, it's, it's, it's no secret, it's, it's, it's not a problem. And, and I mean that, and you'll, you'll get an adequate response. I just spoke with, uh, Councilwoman Brown last week, she alerted me about something, and we're actively pursuing something in that area as well. So, um, thank you for your time and attention, and I'll, I look forward to continue serving you guys and trying to keep our city safe.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there any of the punk?
Oh, sure. Uh, thank you, Ms. Oliver. I also had pictures on my, like, Thursday here, I took, I took a tour of all the facilities. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Yes, yes. On my Thursday here, I took a tour of one of the facilities, so I took forward the pictures. So you know, the budget was just approved three weeks ago. Uh, when the budget was submitted, we had no money in there for park maintenance. I kindly asked the council, and you graciously awarded us $20,000 so that I can make those repairs and order them filled. So since the budget was just approved three weeks ago, we're in the process of ordering those items. Now, I had already asked Public Works to dispose of that, so I'll get back on about that. They've been trying to install the roll-down doors for the bathrooms and everything else, they've been working on other things. So we'll make sure, and I'm sure when you looked around, the ties also about the playground area, a lot of the, that stuff is sticking up. We have that down, and that's why I asked for the additional money, because there was no money previously for repair. Now, as to the, uh, fitness chair, she's right, it's overgrown. I don't know what's been going on, but we're writing, our plans are to write a grant to make it a par fitness trail, but I can certainly have them go down and cut it down for now, because it is very dark out there. We've talked to the engineers about perhaps adding some lighting back there. I took a tour with Lieutenant Abney, he's our OEM guy, to talk about exits and just safety about the park. So we're on it, we just haven't gotten there just yet, but we'll address it. So I have, I'll talk to John about throwing that out tomorrow.
Why are there the stairs around?
Yes, ma'am.
The pools?
My pleasure.
What is the status of the pools, and when are they going to be open?
Certainly. Well, I know, I, I make sure my city administrator said I can address it, I've spoken with him about this before, just like we, uh, I, we spoke on Friday. Our plan is to open the last Saturday of the month, which is, uh, June 29th, that's our standing date, but we're facing some challenges right now. Can I give my update? Uh, okay, the issue, Rushmore Pool, as you know, about 10 years ago, we went to PVC liners at Rushmore Pool and Siderfield, they renovated, nice renovations. Uh, at that time, that was the industry standard, you normally go to liners, it's a cost savings. But now, what normally happens is you build in, uh, money after, they're good for maybe 10 to 15 years. We're at that 10-year mark, there are tears in the liners. Unfortunately, we cannot repair, we could repair Rushmore Pool for a set fee, but for a few thousand dollars more, I'm recommending to go back to concrete. We're looking to see if we can identify the money in the budget to fully repair Rushmore Pool, so we can open it. At this point, we're looking to open the kiddie pool and the spray park, the spray end for Rushmore Pool, so the daycare centers will go there, non-swimmers, there certainly will be a guard. Um, Hana Akers, of course, will be fully open, and his Siderfield, there's a tear in the liner in Siderfield along the edge, just like last year, we're hoping that it'll hold for the season.
And that's scheduled to open on the 29th also?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, so Rushmore will not have a full-service pool?
Not at this time. Not this time, we have to repair the liner, liner's gone. So this time, we're identifying money either to do the repair or return it to concrete, which is what the recommendation is. So I'll know in the next two days, I have to sit down and find the money in the budget.
Do you know how long, I mean, it's going to take?
Sure, if we go back to concrete, uh, once they empty it and take out the liner, uh, they prep it for a day, takes two days to do the concrete, it has to dry, uh, we might be down for a week. It won't take that long, it might be down for a week, it'll be minimal, but we'll still have some use of it. And the daycare centers will go there, because they have non-swimmers. So they'll be in the smaller pool, which is three feet, and the sprinkler site.
No, the camps, I understand, the, um, the summer camps, are they closing early this year?
We're closing at 4:00 PM. Uh, my prop for summer camp is the school district, which provides it for free. They provide it for free. Uh, we charge through ordinance a fee of $50 per week. We're closing, it's true, in the past, we have been open at the school sites, like, we 5:00, but the school charges us, uh, a fee that they fair, is fair, a fee that they dean is fair and just. While we're in the process of getting ready to meet with them to create a memorandum of understanding, uh, this time, it's cost prohibitive for us to provide camp that long. So I'm limiting with the school district does. We're in their site, it's going to be indoor camp, we're moving from, previously, camp was exclusively outdoors, we only came in when it rained, but they charged us $6,000 for like five rain days. Exactly. Cost prohibitive. Um, what we charge now, uh, parents pay less than $1 an hour for service, while this is a public good, it's not something we can underwrite at that cost. So we're going to 4:00, we're beginning at 8:00. It's a literacy-based program based upon freedom schools, uh, certainly similar to what the school district is doing. Hopefully, I've already begun, uh, begun engaging the school district and partnering for next year. Now, we did change, we're going to do completed kindergarten and completed third. Why? Because that's what the school district doesn't, that's what the school district doesn't do, and they do it for free, I can't compete with free. So I found the need, the need is, uh, completed kindergarten and completed third. And we're going to go to the Cedar Brook site, we have been at other sites. Cedar Brook, uh, is a, is a, a site we feel is more appropriate for camp. At Cook School, we had access just to the cafeteria, at Cedar Brook, we have access to the gymnasium, the cafeteria, probably a few of the classrooms, and they have a baseball field, and, uh, it's not as inhabited by, how do you say, deer and other animals. At Cook School, the pond right now is flooded, I'm concerned with having children there, especially since we're dealing with kindergartners to third graders. Cedar Brook is just a safer site for me, for us, rather. So for enrollment, we have 31. We have 31. Now, remember, we're changing, they used to, uh, of, the get, the service area previously was, I believe, kindergarten through up to eighth grade. We have teen camp, we don't have one enrolled right now, but we're hiring lots of teens. We're giving them jobs.
Right. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our corporate council head.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something earlier, a question that councilors should ask about, uh, special conditions on ABC licenses. Um, you do not need a hearing in order to institute those, uh, special conditions. However, in the event that we receive an objection to those special conditions, that will institute a hearing. So it's up to the council to first, you know, create the special conditions. If we have received some challenge to that, we then call for it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Council members? Motion for? All those in favor? Any polls, any extension?